Good morning and welcome to the December twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four meeting of the Pittsburgh Housing Authority. I have now called this meeting to order at eight forty-five A.M. Please be advised that F A T V is conducting an audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. I ask that anyone in this audience who is recording this meeting, please identify themselves for the record now by standing and stating their name and city of residence. At this time, I ask that all electronic devices be placed in a silent mode. The members of the public who wish to speak remotely in the future will be asked to please contact the administrative office of the Pittsburgh Housing Authority to be recognized during our broadcast. At this time, if there's any member in the audience who would like to have a public comment, please state your full name and your city residence. You can speak for two minutes regarding that item on the agenda. Seeing none, we'll move forward with our agenda. Item number three on the agenda, motion to approve amendments from the F H A regular board meeting held October sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. So. Item been moved by Commissioner Goodman and seconded by Commissioner in a discussion on only one for me. On new age three, yeah, age three. Item number twenty, there's a note that we made a motion to invite councilors and residents to the executive session. That should be corrected. We invited Councilor Van Hathley to join us in the executive session. There's no clarification of that. Just the correction in the minute where we. So we need to make that correction in the agenda. It was my councilor that was invited to the executive session. It was Councilor Van Hathley. I'll make a motion to approve the amendments as amended. Motion been made to approve the amendments as amended.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Vasiliou. All in favor? Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, the motion is carried. Okay, item number four on the agenda, motion to approve amendments from the F H A executive board meeting on October sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. So. Motion made by Commissioner Goodman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Slay in a discussion on a motion. No discussion on the motion. I'll take this as unanimous consent. The motion carries. Most item number five on the agenda, motion to approve the minutes on the F H A special board meeting held on November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. The move. Motion made by Commissioner Thorne, seconded by Commissioner Vasiliou. There any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, the motion carries. Item number six on the agenda, motion to approve the minutes from the F H A special board meeting held on December ninth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Goodwin, seconded by Commissioner Slay. All in favor? See any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, the motion carries. Item number seven on the agenda. Motion to approve the minutes of the F H A special executive board meeting held December ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. Motion made by Commissioner Goodman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Vasiliou. All in favor? The motion carries. Item number eight on the agenda. Motion to select and approve time and location for January sixth, January tw- two thousand and twenty-five board meeting. So.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Do and seconded by Commissioner Vasiliou. Discussion on the motion. We're thinking of having it on the week of the twenty-sixth. Is that what I saw? And we're claiming to have it here as usual?
Uh, yes, Mr. Um, we're trying to wrap up the budget for this year twenty-five. A little bit more complex and at least our P account needs more time. So I'm recommending the week of the twenty-sixth, any day, not anytime, which is convenient for the board. And then at that meeting, that's that'll be our official annual meeting for the bylaws of the F H A. You will sign off not only on the budget, you'll set out the the schedule for the rest of the year, and there'll be elections of the board officers as well.
Uh, is there any discussion of the location? Will we over here or?
Usually for the annual meetings, we have a location here, but that's obviously a board decision. It could be uh anywhere else except Wallace Tower.
Okay. It isn't construction? I mean, I thought it was here. Okay. That has today. Okay, the uh location has been agreed upon here and the date has been agreed upon January twenty-sixth. All in favor?
We need, I was a week at the twenty-sixth, so the board needs to pick a day, either Monday, Tuesday.
Twenty-sixth is not it, so we shouldn't. Oh, no, why not? No. I mean, the uh, what what day are we looking at?
Whatever's convenient for the board.
I'm comfortable with our usual Wednesday. People want to continue to do that. Wednesday be twenty-eight, right?
Yep.
What time?
I'll recommend nine o'clock just for last.
True.
And usually yes, mayor, and usually um, uh, the C, our C P A attends the budget meetings.
So I lose the question. I lose the question. Okay. So and motion has been made to have our December, no, January, uh, two thousand and twenty-five board meeting here and the day's location uh, on January twenty-ninth at nine A.M. All in favor? All right. Motion carries. All right, uh, so item number nine on the agenda, review of executive directors' report, attachments, and supplemental report. Let's vote.
Uh, good morning. I just want to thank, uh, we have some distinguished guests. We have Mayor Spalyan present. We have Dr. Hodges from Pittsburgh State University. Doctor Weiss from the university. Thank you for attending. I gotta get through some minor items and we're waiting for our third student. My, I made a mistake on the schedule for that, but he should be here shortly. And um, so we just got a lot of some other minor items in our report unless there's some really conflicting issues with your schedule. He should be here about fifteen minutes. Does anybody in the board have any questions on my report or we should send that on the Friday? So I will suggest that we jump to item ten on the agenda, motion for tables for October and December of two thousand and twenty-four. Attach for name.
Well, I'll make a motion through the panels for October and December of two thousand and twenty-four.
I'll second it.
Motion been made by Commissioner Goodwin and seconded by Commissioner Vasiliou. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, in a discussion on the motion. Seeing none, the motion carries.
I would ask the board to move to item number eleven, motion to approve January, November financial statements.
Motion to approve the financial statements for January, November. I would make that motion. Motion made by Commissioner Goodman and seconded by
Second.
Commissioner Slay. All in favor? All right, and the motion carries.
Very quickly, I attached the draft budget, attachment C for the board's review. That is the not a final budget. We're still working out some of the guidelines from the Executive Office of Housing and Living Communities and some other minor items. But I plan to, the goal is to get through the final budget two weeks before the January board meeting. Um, I did not want to rush anything so quickly. But hopefully I'll give you at least a good two weeks beforehand. Jumping to page six of my report. Item number twelve, motion to approve expungement of former tenants' holiday.
So.
Second.
Motion been made uh by Commissioner Goodman, seconded by Commissioner Vasiliou. All in favor? Aye. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, the motion carries.
Item uh, number thirteen on the agenda, reporting my board report, page six, motion to approve automatic laundry contract, two-year extension.
They have a motion, please. Make a motion for approvals. We got Dave on the motions. I second. I have Commissioner Vasiliou on the motion, seconded by Commissioner Goodman. All in favor? Aye. Any discussion on the motion?
Um, yes, the money from the laundry machine still goes to the tenant associations. The tenant benefits on that.
No, because it goes to our general fund.
Okay.
The tenant associations will receive a check um of certain percentage per unit. So we do fund the tenant associations.
From the laundry?
Not from our general fund. But there's nothing, there's no set aside from the laundry.
Laundry money goes into the fund and then the tenants pay money out of the fund, but they're not necessarily the same.
Correct.
Is it, is there, is it tenant money broken up per building or or just one general?
It's broken up per building, but because the Durk and Tenant Association has a tenant, uh, tenant housing authority by tenant organization, we're gonna see if we can give them more money so they can use it for places that do not have tenant associations like Dirk and Green Acres.
What's the status? Do we have status of any association being coming, coming online for the other locations?
Uh, Wallace, I think is having issues with their election process. Uh, Daniel Heith, we're trying to get tenant associations there after three years. Uh, Candy Valley used to have a very active tenant association, but they had some internal conflicts and they disbanded. And Green Acres is very difficult because there's no place for them to meet. Uh, really, it's uh Wallace and Durk and have had the strongest tenant associations. And we have a very active, uh, two resident service coordinators. But we cannot force tenants to have tenant associations. We encourage it. There's funding. We'll have guidance or help them out, but at the end, they have to want to do that.
I think that uh the board should make it our priority some kind of way to encourage members of uh of these communities, you know, some kind of way to get involved. I don't know what we can do to do that, uh, but I think that needs to be a priority for us going forward, but two thousand and twenty-five, because we want their voices to be heard. We want them to understand that they're, they're uh they're important in in discussion of any matters relates to uh any decision-making around their living situation or family situation, why they are now.
I will talk to the uh, the staff about that, what strategies we can come up with. But um, just to let the board know and our guests that we've, we feel very proactive in trying to encourage them.
Right. And 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 we appreciate that sometime, you know, like, listen, Commissioner Goodman, they have a relationship with someone that lives out there. You know, you kind of encourage, you know what I mean? So I think that we're just joining your efforts to try to, you know, and ask that we join the efforts to try to help. You know, in any way we can.
And and we have, we have funds from the state to to help them.
To help with that, with the board, okay?
Yeah, we got seven hundred and fifty dollars a year, right?
I think it's dependent upon the size of it.
Right.
Isn't it per resident?
Yeah.
It's per, per unit.
Per unit.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I would ask the the board to jump to page twelve in my report. Item number six, uh, item number fifteen on the agenda, motion to elect a member for the F H A construction subcommittee.
Uh, so.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Goodman, seconded by Commissioner Slay. In a discussion on the motion. I said that I would be happy to join Dave and our construction subcommittee on the last night, I think, so. Unless anyone, Jack said.
No.
Is it, is that, is that list of names already on this committee or? Did the team person say, oh, two persons? Dave and a vacancy. Oh, and then you're the person saying. And I will do it if everyone's okay. Is that okay? If Dave is okay with that.
Yes, we get along.
All right, so Commissioner Goodman will be nominated to take that second spot. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, in discussion. The motion carries.
Item number sixteen on the agenda, review of the Wallace Tower mod base project. Uh, the deputy director wants to jump in real quickly on a brief.
So they are uh continuing along. They've vetted out all the kitchens. I thought there's just a picture here on that. And so as you know, they're, they're working on the first phase. Uh, we discussed the change orders at the last meeting. Um, that's all. Everything is moving along according to schedule. Uh, we anticipate that the second phase will start sometime in March or April. Any questions on that? That's like twenty something minutes at a time. Uh, actually, it's uh, we had twenty-six units total each phase. The last phase will be thirty-nine.
Is that added in this phase? Is maybe the last phase of the phase or?
Um, well, each phase is being done in stacks, so the last phase is uh four stacks instead of three, so that's the reason why. Each stack has thirteen units that they're doing, so right now they have the three stacks they're working on. They're anticipating that'll be done sometime in March.
Where are we at in terms of the overall project? Like, we're in a good space right now or we still?
Um, yeah, I mean, I would say that we're in a good space, you know, construction's ongoing right now, which is good. They're moving according to schedule, which is also good. Um, the change orders that have come up are not really anything that we didn't expect. I mean, we knew that the plumbing in that building had had issues for many years and we suspected that once they actually opened the walls, they would see some of the conditions they found, and that's the reason why we had a lot of those change orders that we went over at the last meeting.
How's the tenant relocation situation right now?
Uh, so our tenant relocation coordinator, uh, we don't have any complaints. Um, the first phase of relocation was all done, um, I want to say in October. Uh, that's when they started doing the construction. The next phase of relocation will start until probably around April. And then that's when we will have, you know, another string of people moving and possible complaints, but.
Will those relocations be people moving to the new units?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and those will be final moves. That's the intention. And then the second phase, they're planning on doing the mailboxes, so we're also planning on issuing mail keys uh for the mailboxes. Right now, tenants are using their old mailboxes. Even though they've moved to other units just for the sake of not having to go and change them all twice. Uh, we figured we'd wait until the mail is done and switch them to what their final address is gonna be.
That's a uh question I would like to uh and I would like to ask the mayor, as often we see big complaints about relocation, anything like that, that you know of?
No. No, not from Wallace Towers? No.
Okay, all right, thank you. So because I know sometimes people that sounds, that's good to hear, so I'm gonna agree that.
I would have thought I would have heard some.
We and then the mayor would have, uh, their staff would have let us know, um. But I, I really got to thank the staff and Jordan, I believe, for helping on the relocation. It's a, it's a difficult process and Andrew with his massive reorganization chart on relocation and the contractor and um architect, the team and Bruce Budrick, he's really, he's done a phenomenal job in the relocation.
I feel like there's been good communication and uh, you know, when it comes to relocation plan or on laundry.
And Mayor, I want to thank the senior center as well. They've been very proactive and and encouraging our residents of Wallace Tower to use the uh, services of the senior center because our community room has been shut down. And our resident coordinators have worked with the senior center and our, and our community at Wallace, say, hey, there's a senior center here. If this is an inconvenience, we understand that. Um, I would not want to live in a building where there's hammering going on, but they've been very good, but the senior center has been phenomenal and was listening to us.
That's what I guess that was partnership about. In terms of, you know, our organization partying together to make it work.
For more, Danny? I didn't have anything else on that project, so.
Did you mention the change orders?
Those, they're an agenda item?
No, the uh.
Andrew mentioned that we'll be agents, we're basically moving back.
Okay, yeah, we'll talk about the last meeting. Got you.
Well, if you want to jump to seventeen. Sure, for the bid proposal, project one seventy-three.
So uh, item seventeen on the agenda is the motion to approve the bid proposal for project zero nine seven one seven three.
Motion approved. Where's, what page is that?
Page fourteen of the board report. Item number five. Seventeen on the agenda.
Oh, the motion approved, uh, motion's supposed to be. Okay.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Vasiliou.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Slay. In a discussion on the motion.
Um, so basically, this project is, we really haven't been involved too much. The architect basically has been kind of running it behind the scenes. This is the federal ARPA money to replace the federal Pacific panels. So uh, it was all designed with final approval and bid going out uh last month, and so we now have a low bid. Um, the estimated construction project was four hundred and seventeen thousand nine hundred and eighty. And the low bidder was D M H Electric at four hundred and seventeen thousand seven hundred and eighty.
Four hundred and seventeen thousand seven hundred and eighty?
Yep, that was their uh final bid.
Are you comfortable with this company?
Yeah, we've used D M H Electric as subs before. Um, they're, they're well-known in the state. They've done a lot of projects with U O H L C as well, so.
Oh, swell.
What's that?
Rock, just in Sterling, Mass.
In Sterling, Mass. My, my concern is, once we commit to them, uh, are they going to back up to to accommodate impact on completion date or no?
Well, once they sign the contract, they'll be given a set number of days for the contract completion. The only way that could be extended if there was some circumstances that were approved by all parties and hitting the statement, so. I don't think that um, I think their scheduling probably played a part in whatever they were considering for their bid. So I don't anticipate that that's gonna be an issue.
Ninety percent of all our construction contracts are three-party contracts with a state level of the files.
Is that at Wallace Tower? Is it turning down? Will they turn it down?
Various locations, yeah, multiple locations.
These are the federal Pacific Electric panels that have been sold each one years ago or something like that, so it'll have to be brought up.
They gotta put all those circuits back, there's a lot of panels there.
Thank you. So I move the question. Okay. I, in a discussion on the motion. Motion has already been voted on, so all in favor here? Aye. Aye. Motion carries. Mr. Motion.
Well, I'd like to jump now to our uh intern program. Our third intern should be here in a couple of minutes, but I'll start off with interns. So far, um. I uh the relationship that the Pittsburgh Housing Board has had with the university started in two thousand and nineteen. Doctor Weiss, I think I reached out to you somehow, got your, your name in contact. I believe we've had over fourteen interns run through the program over the last couple of years. And how the program is designed, you have to live uh in Pittsburgh and attend F S U and be a student withstanding, and we've had some phenomenal interns over the years. And this last summer, the three interns we had have come in. I don't want to say the best, but they've been great, but some of the most valued uh for us as an employer, and we actually hired all three of the interns in employment capacity. Um, and I, I really want to thank the university. I want to thank you, Doctor Hodges, for coming here today. And I want to thank the mayor because this is a relationship between the, the city and the university. And it's something really special and our first intern, and please, if you want to come up, as we uh give these likes and follows out, Ally is uh is one of our interns. Come on up, Ally, and uh take a lap. And Dave, we want to join us finally. And then Ally um is her first year at the university and she brought a lot of the industry to help. This year has been a very, very um transformative years for the housing authority, and we had, needed a lot of clerical support. And Ally did a lot of work, always smiling, always happy to be here, right, Ally? And every time, I said, Ally, are you busy? Yes, I'm busy. She caught on really quick and really a um, and her mom is here, looks like her grandmother, thank you for coming. And Ally's been a great asset, just not to the housing authority, to the university, but to the whole Pittsburgh community. And she represents what's best, I think, in Pittsburgh, but Ally, thank you for all the work you've done, and she works hard on for us now in the finance department. But I really want to thank you for everything you've done for us. Thank you. Grandma, don't want to say anything, cause.
Thank you very much.
And ladies, if you want to say anything, my audience.
Thanks for all the help. I think this is exactly the sort of partnership and the sort of impact on students that we're very proud of the Pittsburgh State, and it doesn't happen without the great mayor paying attention to the things that the community needs and the community's willingness to reach out and and ask, so having great students like Ally have this opportunity, it's very special.
And uh, our second intern, uh, there's Cam, right here. Cam, I want to, uh, thank you for everything you've done. Cam uh actually helped organize the owl and um he took the place of Yoko. He had very uh big shoes to fill. And Cam's uh, and he's majoring in something, what, something I can never imagine, his math side, something like, where did you get on your? And he's in this master's program at Pittsburgh State University, and he lives in Pittsburgh. And Cam has really uh been the uh, the go-to executive assistant for Andrew and myself. And when Yoko um announced her leave, we realized there was no, there was no way we could get somebody on board. We talked to Cam. He really absorbed everything that Yoko knew, and he's really brought us to a higher level in organization and technology. So I don't know if I should have to thank him for the owl, I guess. But uh, you know, Cam, you've done a phenomenal job and uh we, we can tell we have increased efficiency in the last two months. He remembered to get the cake. He texted me last night, I forgot the cake. He shows up with a cake and goes, what did you do? Cause I ran down to the market basket and I got it. But uh, you know, to the university and for the city, Cam again represents what's best in this community. And Cam, thank you very much. And we have our, our third intern. I know he's upset with me because I forgot to tell him the time to come in. On the Jordan. Jordan's another official from Pittsburgh, attends the university. And uh, we discussed earlier about the relocation project at Wallace. Jordan is the one who really jumped into the relocation. Um, he is one who's orchestrated moves. He, he wrote the plan, the relocation thing, which the state signed off on. This is real world experience. So if there was a problem, I was gonna point to Jordan. But, but uh, as Andrew told the mayor and everybody that there's been no complaints, or the mayor said there's been no complaints about the relocation. And it's a very delicate situation. Um, and Jordan's been jumping into the uh construction. We're always helping us guide us on our construction process. And Jordan, you know, really phenomenal followers, well, I never tell you that. But uh, Jordan, thank you for everything you've done and continue to do for us. But thank you. Well, thank you. Uh, we uh we have cake. We always have cake at our but, you know, to the mayor, mayor, thank you for attending. Uh, Pittsburgh is a phenomenal community.
And with great collaboration, Pittsburgh State, we're gonna get better and better.
And I got the doctor, Doctor Weiss, we wouldn't be here today doing this if it wasn't for you. I mean, you're the one Uh, I got the doctor, Doctor Weiss, who will be here today doing this if it wasn't for you. I mean, you're the one who gets us to students. You orchestrate this, and um I can't thank you enough, including myself and the rest of the board, for really taking the time, because we were influencing young people. I define young now under forty. Uh, but uh, the intern program, to be honest with you, has changed my perspective on young people. I think sometimes when people get older, not me, they get jaded at younger generations, and to be honest with you, there's some great people that are coming up. Uh, Andrew was my intern in Marlborough, University, and um, it's a, the intern programs are fantastic, and I would encourage all students to have something to do. Doctor, mayor, would you like to say any final words, anything?
Thank you to Doctor Weiss for making those connections, I think, Karen. The university, we want these partnerships to happen, but the most fruitful ones begin and end in a classroom where students are thinking about the good work, the things that they're learning, the skills that they're developing, the things they need to use um to help to be partners on things bigger than they are. So what a great example of that work in action. So thank you, Doctor Weiss, but, but thank you to the House of Attorney for being such a great partner to our students, these kinds of opportunities. Anything the city can do to help, let us know.
And this, this started uh through the property center for civic engagement.
Yes.
At the university, so this is uh, the university initiative through the property center. So, partnership between university and the town and the city and, and maybe the nonprofit systems and all of that, so. I can be a part of that. I love that, uh, working with my students of making that connection with um, that intersection between the classroom theory and the, the reality of the working world, to the end where it takes place and how that intersects. So for me, that's where the, the road hits the road, and uh, that's, that's fun for me. I love that. Just a small part of that, so. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Thank you, everybody. Thank you. Uh.
And just what I, I wanted to say, thank you to Dr. Hodge and Dr. Weiss and to the mayor for, for continuing this partnership. For me, it's exciting because we get to keep talent in Pittsburgh. You know, when we were able to bring them in as interns and hire them into meaningful employment, um, it, it speaks volumes to the growth in the city, and it's very important to keep young, talented people in the city, because that speaks our future. That's, that speaks our future. I was holding a conversation with Cam. Oh, I, I used, I used, I live in Gard, in front of Gard, but uh, but now I make my home in Fisher. Yeah, Gard is ten, fifteen miles on the road, but it's very important that a talented young man like, like him, very talented, extremely brilliant, is making his home in Fisher. And so hopefully he buys a house here. Hopefully Jordan buys a house in Fisher. Hopefully this young lady buys a house in Fisher and start investing, reinvesting back into the community. That's how we continue to grow, right, man? So I think these, these partnerships, as the mayor said, these partnerships are extremely important. Invite him to the continued growth of our city. Thank you, Mr. Motion, thank you for committing.
I wanna thank Ally's grandmother for coming.
Thank you.
Very proud. Thank you. Um, good morning. If, if anybody wants any cake, please uh yourself, and uh, but thank you for coming, and uh well, again, we'll, we'll look forward to the next summer for more interviews. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd be glad to. If we uh I guess we both still there, so.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we did, so. Seventeen was the federal Pacific.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So, yeah, we're having, okay? All right. So that includes, that includes our agenda for this meeting, the next regular scheduled meeting. Uh, the Pittsburgh Housing Authority is scheduled for January the twenty ninth at nine A M here at uh the Dation Complex. Now, entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting and we will enter, enter the So, the, the reason then, if we don't, we don't have any items in these sessions that we have to vote on, so we can adjourn the meeting uh only for purposes, we don't have to come out of executive session and to back in to adjourn the meeting, so we can do it now. Uh, and if there's a, a session that we have to vote on, then we would have to come back into the session, into open session if we, if there was something to vote on. Is anything, there's nothing to vote on in the executive?
No, just information.
Okay. So, so the motion would be, motion to adjourn the meeting to return, to return only to uh, uh, in our meeting, right? So can I get a motion to adjourn? Motion made by Commissioner Slayne, seconded by, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And motion carries. We're now entering into the executive session.